Good evening, good evening all. Welcome to the Milton School Committee School Choice Open Public Hearing. Before we get started, if you could all join me in the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and for the multitudes who are here, initially, we're going to have our School Choice Open Public Hearing, and then as soon as that adjourns, which depending on the participation, may be pretty quick, then we'll move right into our regular school committee and the items that many of you here for. So, School Choice Open Public Hearing, just a brief explanation of why we're here. In 1991, excuse me, in 1991, the Massachusetts Legislature enacted the Massachusetts Inter-District School Choice Law. And under that law, that it allows parents to send children to public schools outside of the communities in which they live. The stated goal of that legislation was to foster competition among school districts to try to improve education. That was the stated goal. Every year, school districts can decide to withdraw from the School Choice Law with respect to being a receiving district. School districts can't withdraw with respect to being a sending district. In other words, a child or parent or guardian always has the opportunity to send their children to another receiving district, another school district, but school committees can decide after public hearing, prior to June 1st every year, to withdraw if they wish from the School Choice Law with respect to being a receiving district, i.e. accepting students from other communities. So, this is, as required under our policy, our public meeting under the School Choice Law, which gives the public the opportunity to say whatever they wish before our discussions of whether to withdraw from the Public Choice Law for the FWA, for school year 2015, 2016. So, does anyone here wish to speak on the School Choice Law? Seeing none, without objection, and just for school committee members, we will have a discussion in our regular school committee meeting, which will begin in moments of this issue, and you may want to have a discussion of that if you will, but we can do that in our meeting. So, without objection, I will adjourn the School Choice Open Public Meeting. Seeing none, the School Choice Open Public Meeting is now adjourned. And now, we will proceed with our regular school committee meeting for May 6, 2015. Welcome everyone to the May 6, 2015 Milton School Committee Meeting. The first order of business is to approve our agenda. I have a couple of proposed changes to our agenda. What I would like to do is to move School Choice, the School Choice Vote, which appears under the Chairman's Report, to move that up after Citizen Speak, so it remains fresh in our minds, rather than have it wait awhile. I would like to move the approval of the Minutes down after the Chairman's Report, so we can accommodate many of the people who are here tonight. Without objection, I will delete from the agenda the Town Meeting Update, because we were all there the last two nights, so I don't think we need to update ourselves on that. And I don't believe there's a Health and Wellness Subcommittee Report, and if I'm right on that, we would delete that from the agenda as well. So, if there's no objection to any of those changes, I will approve those changes without objection. So, the first thing we have on the, oh, first thing we have on the agenda is Citizen Speak, and it appears we have an individual to speak at Citizen Speak. Citizen Speak is the opportunity for citizens to come and speak before the school committee for up to three minutes. We allow 15 minutes at the beginning of every meeting for Citizen Speak. And so, our first speaker of this term is Eileen Heller. Is Ms. Heller here?
I'm on the waiting seat for Larry.
Oh, I see, is this on the swim team? Okay, that's fine, that's fine. All right, all right, well, hold your horses down there. All right, so, anyone else here for Citizen Speak? Seeing none, we will move on to the Superintendent's Report. Ms. Gormly.
Thank you very much. Chairman Zulus, first, I'm very proud, and I would like to invite to the table Milton High School teacher Nancy Michaels with our Milton High School Life Smarts Team. Would you join the school committee? Ms. Michaels is the advisor for this nationally recognized team. Ms. Michaels and the team members are going to explain why they're here tonight to be recognized. Welcome.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, Superintendent Gormly, we want to thank you for inviting us here tonight, as well as the members of the school committee. We're really excited to be here. But I'm exceptionally excited to be here, because I get to be with these nice young men that are accompanying me here to the table tonight. And actually, my captain Nolan is going to introduce the team himself, and he is going to be the master of ceremonies, so.
Nolan.
Hi, my name is Nolan Carvallo. This is Eileen Chase, Albert Niedy, and New Energy, and we're the Milton High School Life Smarts Team. Now, first week in April break, we went up to Seattle/Washington to compete in a national competition, and it was really fun. We ranked 19th out of 34. And I'm just going to explain a little bit about the competition, and these guys will go into detail about other things, but, so the way the competition was set up was that there was different segments of the competition. The first bit was called Last Smarty Standing. It was essentially that we would pair up with a member of our sister team, which was another state that we spent the weekend with, and we'd try and answer questions together as a group, or as a pair. And we'd go up, we didn't do that well, but it was pretty fun. The next bit was called Speed Dating the Experts. It was essentially, there was at least 11 different experts in different fields, everything from car sales to technology, environment, banking, and we'd go, and they'd ask us questions about stuff. So, stuff about car loans, about credit debt, technology, so like smartphones. And we'd have to answer questions and participate in different activities regarding those fields. And then, we'd get points on that, too. So, we were constantly trying to earn points throughout this entire thing. And then after that, we moved on to the actual competitions, and that was when we all stood up, we all went up head-to-head against other states. So, we went up against South Carolina, the District of Columbia, and Indiana, which was our sister team. And we'd answer a variety of questions. I won't go into the format of it, because that'd take awhile, but it was very fun, and these guys will tell you everything else about it.
As Nolan said, we had our sister team that we were paired up with, with Indiana, and that was very fun. And as he also said, we got to compete with other states, which was a great experience. I got to talk with people from other states and kind of express their culture and how they, their opinions, and it was a really great experience, especially since eating dinner with the Indiana team. We got to see kind of how like their home was, and it was a great experience. I don't think I would have been able to see that for awhile, anyway. So, thank you a lot for...
Like Liam said, thank you a lot for the staff. All right, so, thank you a lot for letting us go to Seattle. It was an amazing place. I personally love the city, seeing all the sights, and generally, Seattle is regarded as a very rainy and kind of bad weather place. We were so lucky that it never rained once in all those five days. It was the perfect time to visit Seattle. So, we got to tour all the great places, like the Space Needle, Pike's Place, which is a market which, they have a little fish store, which is known for the guys throwing fish, and see generally the whole city in perfect, beautiful weather, take beautiful photos, tour the place, it's great, and good food.
I brought that bike from the place. I'm standing for one minute, please. I would like you to know that Albert placed third in the country in health and safety.
Congratulations to Albert, he was the last smarty standing. And, is this working?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, my job is kind of to talk about what we learned at this competition, and like just from the beginning, we made it to states, and at states, we were the fourth-place team, and we had to go up against the number-one team in the seeds, and that was in the semifinals. And then, so, we were feeling slightly dejected, we didn't think we were that good, but during the semifinals, we pulled through, we won by two points, and made it to the finals, and thus qualified for Nationals. So, that was extremely exciting. What that taught us was basically healthy competition, meaning that we can all be learning together while having fun at the same time and enjoying ourselves. As mentioned earlier, we met so many different people from all over the United States, including Hawaii, including Florida, including Rhode Island, and we just learned all these different like dialects. We met people who called soda pop, and vice versa, and it was just really amazing seeing all these different cultures, because normally, we think like American identity is monolithic, but this just showed the diversity of Americans like throughout the nation. So, that was one great thing we learned. Also, just the subjects themselves, for example, I was in charge of environment, and we focused on questions that had to do with pollution, that had to do with contamination, that had to do specifically with like reduce, reuse, recycle. And so, this competition really helped create a consciousness in our minds of how to create like a better environment for us to leave behind to the next generations, for us to basically understand how economics works in our country, and what are some good decision-making skills to incorporate, for example, when like buying a car or a used car, just checking credit scores, all these different things, and we just learned so much about them. We were able to share our understanding of that with other students from Milton High School, and through all our understanding, we just, we've become better citizens of the United States of America, which is, I think, one of the greatest things. So, thank you so much Superintendent Gormly for this wonderful experience.
So, I just wanted, once again, say thank you. We know this was not a cheap trip, and we'd like to, we can't express our gratitude enough for allowing us to go and financing this trip. Hopefully, next year, we'll do better job fundraising, but thank you again.
Mr. Carvallo, you should share with the school committee, the audience, first, you're giving me too much credit. I didn't answer one question, I didn't study one question, you... Well, I was going to say, ask the audience a question. You did the work, and the viewing audience should know that these young men, students and their families are fundraising and match the school district. As I said, we send athletic teams to competitions, and these academic competitions are a huge part of the culture of Milton High. But if you attend Town Meeting, and I see all the school committee members did purchase the water outside, these young men are out there selling the water to help fund their trip. And so, that's another life-smart skill in the funding of their trip. They were part of the solution, and they're doing the fundraising, so they should be applauded. Mr. Carvallo, I think you should ask just one life-smart question of the whole group.
Okay, so, this one's kind of a hard one. I got reprimanded earlier for asking easy ones, so. The term WYSIWYG, or whizzywig, is used to describe what an image being edited will look like when finished. What does WYSIWYG stand for?
What you see is what you get.
All right, so again, thank you very much.
So, we're ready to take you on, I think. So, what fine representatives you all were, I'm sure, for us and for Milton out in Seattle. Does any member of the school committee have any comments, questions for our Life Smarts Team?
You didn't really have to go all the way to Seattle, because I'm one of those people that calls soda pop. I just wanted to put it out there that you can ask me other questions as well, to learn a little bit about the Midwest culture.
Leroy?
I would like to congratulate all of you. You don't know how significant it is to compete at the national level and to do well, and to know what that means not only to us, but to your fellow students. So, you're role models for all of the students at Milton High School, so congratulations.
I'd just like to know, so how many times a week do you meet, and how do you prepare? Is it just the four of you, or is there, are you just the top tier of the Life Smarts Team?
We are the top tier. We actually have one more member, he just didn't come to Seattle. Shout out to Brandon Musto, wherever you are. And then, we also have a lower-tier team headed by my brother Peyton. But we, before the competition, we tried to meet once a week, and we'd go over the, they have, the Life Smarts has a website online, that they offer a variety of practice questions, daily quizzes, or for the players, they have long quizzes that you can test your knowledge on, and those are very helpful when we got to actually compete. But yeah.
Kevin?
I would just say, I'm glad that you enjoyed the trip, I'm glad that you enjoyed the experience of meeting other people and broadening your horizons. That's one of life's great joys, and you know, the fact that you're taking that away from it at your age is, I think you have a wonderful, you know, decades ahead of you to experience that.
In closing, I was just going to say, Mr. Musto was over there in his Milton High School baseball uniform, and as I look down at these young men, every one of them is involved with multiple activities at, from robotics to the evening of the 50th anniversary at Milton High School, so they're to be applauded, as are their families and their teachers. And to Ms. Michaels, gentlemen.
Oh, and one last thing, the next year's competition will be in Denver, so we hope that we'll be able to make that one.
Thank you very much, thank you, Ms. Michaels, and thank you, gentlemen. If I may, if I may, Ms. Gormly, one thing that I neglected to do at the beginning of our meeting is to introduce the student representatives on the school committee. Not every, I think not everyone knows that we have representatives from the high school who participate in our school committee meetings, they add their insights and their perspectives to the issues that we discuss. Tonight, we have Matt McCarthy, who is a senior, I think, Matt, do you want to, I don't know if the camera can get Matt, but you got him, all right, good. And Audrey Erickson, Audrey, are you a junior, or you're a junior? So, we have our senior and our junior here tonight, and who's down the end?
Hello.
That's, oh, that's Spencer?
Yes.
Spencer, now Spencer, are you a freshman or sophomore?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore. And so, our freshmen will wait for our, wait for our freshmen next week, so. So, welcome to all of you, and we look forward to your participation. So, sorry to hijack your report.
No, thank you, Chairman Zulus. Next, we'd like to invite to join us at the table Milton High School Future Business Leaders Club and their advisor, A.J. Melanson, and the team. And we'll turn over the introductions and the description to Mr. Melanson, who, as I introduced him earlier this evening, who has multiple hats in the town of Milton, Cunningham parent, Milton High School teacher. Mr. Melanson.
First of all, thank you so much, committee superintendents, for inviting us here tonight. My name is A.J. Melanson, I'm a business and computer teacher here at the high school, and also the Future Business Leaders of America sponsor. Ms. Gormly, thank you so much for your support throughout this year, we greatly appreciate it. And like I said, it's an honor to be here, and thank you for inviting us and having us. So, just very quickly, FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, it is a national organization comprised of students who are interested in pursuing careers in business. It's actually the world's largest business educational organization in the world, and there are over 250,000 members in the United States. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our president, Brandon Musto, who's going to tell you a little bit about what we've done this year.
First and foremost, my apologies for the attire, I just hate the game, sorry about that. So, I'm the president of our FBLA chapter, and so, last year was our first year as an organized group, and we didn't have many members, so we made our first goal to increase membership, and this year, we doubled our membership, which was very good for us. That helped us pursue many business ventures, such as, beginning of the school year, we raised candy, and we put people in the front and rear entrances of the building, and we collected the candy to send to the troops overseas, and it was around Halloween time. And so, after that, we used our skills that we learned from that, and we put them to use by raising money for our club, which we did by selling bandanas and selling sunglasses. In addition, we sold lollipops. I don't have the exact numbers with me, but we made quite a lot of sales. And that led up to our State Leadership Conference, which was in April, and those of us here were able to attend the conference, and we placed first, second, or third, or fourth. Kevin Pham won the, he's a state champion for his category. And since we placed in the conference, we're heading to Chicago for the national conference.
So, what they'll do now is they'll just pass the microphone down, and you can say what event you've placed in, what year, your name, what year you are, what event, what place.
So, I'm Brandon Musto, I'm a junior, and I placed fourth in economics.
My name is Harry Con, and I'm a junior, and I placed third place in economics.
I'm Timmy Walsh, I placed third in marketing.
I'm Andrew Archery, I placed third in marketing and third in Intro to Business.
Hi, I'm Colin Keely, I'm a junior, I placed third in desktop publishing.
My name is Kevin Pham, I'm a senior, and I placed first in desktop publishing.
Hi, my name is Peyton Carvallo, I placed fourth place in Intro to Business, and I'm a freshman.
And so, as Brandon was saying, that this is just our second year as an organized, having a charter in Massachusetts, and last year, we ended up taking two students, Brandon and Colin, finished first in the state in marketing, and then they went on and competed at Nationals in Nashville, Tennessee last year. And like Brandon was saying, we doubled our membership. We also, our first year, we didn't have any females, and this year, we now have four female members of our organization, and we're trying to actively make us more diverse. Unfortunately, no females qualify for Nationals, but hopefully, next year, they can. And we're just so excited to have this opportunity to now go to Chicago. We'll go on June 28th through July 3rd. Right now, we're in crunch time for Kevin and Colin, they actually have to submit, they have a prejudged event with their desktop publishing, where they're creating flyers, pamphlets, business cards, and an average, a print ad for a fictitious band. That's the title of that, at the national level. So, we have to get that in a week from Friday, and then when they're there, they'll actually take an online test for their second portion of it. And the rest of them, when they get there, starting on Monday, the 29th, all the way through the 2nd, they'll have different times where they'll compete. We'll also have opportunities to go to different workshops dealing with business, they'll be able to network, just like Life Smarts did, with students from around the whole country. And I know Brandon and Colin had an amazing experience, I did as well. I learned so much last year, it was my first year as an advisor, now my second year. So, they're a fantastic group of people. Does anyone have any questions for us?
Well, A.J., let me just say, it's a fabulous thing that you're spearheading, and as I look at each of you, I can't help thinking that I'm going to be working for one of you in the not-too-distant future, particularly you, Mr. Carvallo. So, does any of the members, Leroy, I saw you had...
I'm interested in how you prepare, particularly for things like economics and marketing, what's the preparation like?
So, for economics, Harry and I, we take economics during the school year as a class, so that helps a lot. But in addition to that, on the side, we have, Mr. Melanson helps us out, you know, give us books or any information we need that we might need to study for the test. It helps a lot on the state test, and hopefully helps on the national test.
So, would Mr. Musto and Mr. Melanson explain about the economic options at Milton High, the different courses?
Absolutely. So, and Mr. Walker, to piggyback what Brandon was saying, with that, that's the first thing I try to do when we have our club, I started asking the students, what courses are you taking here? And those are the natural fits, you know, Brandon and Harry take AP, micro last year, macro this year, so I said, I'd really like it if you guys would try, you know, to compete in economics. I have Peyton in my Introduction to Business class, I had Andy and Tim last year, so knowing their skill sets, I try to guide them towards events that they would be successful in. But we, you know, have other people who never took a course, and Kevin and Colin have never done anything with desktop publishing, formerly at our school, but yet, we have the state champion and third place finish, so it's pretty remarkable. But for our courses that we offer here, we have Introduction to Business, we have Personal Finance, hopefully, we'll be offering Accounting again next year. This year, we have not offered it, but it has in the past. We have AP, Micro, and Macro Economics.
Do you do anything with investing, investments?
We touch on it in our Introduction to Business class, and also in the Personal Finance class, but we don't have an actual course just on investing, but in each of those two courses, we do. Do you all discuss that in your economics class as well, anything with investing?
Hello.
I'm sure all the business courses, you know, have it throughout.
Mr. Donahue?
So, I was wondering what the competition's like, is it a written exam, is it an oral exam, is it head-to-head?
It all depends on the event. They will all take online multiple-choice tests. And then, for marketing, if Tim and Andy can finish in the top 10, what will happen is, they will then move on to the finals, and where they are sequestered away, and they're given a topic, and they have 30 minutes to prepare a presentation to discuss whatever problem or challenge that they provide for them, and then they will go into a room where they would give their presentation. So, I'm really, it would be an amazing experience to go through that. Like I said, with Kevin and Colin, they have the prejudge, where they have to prepare these publications prior, and then once they're there, they'll have the test. Peyton with Introduction to Business will just take an online test, and Harry and Brandon will also take an online multiple-choice test. And for those four, it's just that they'll be scored on those, and then they announce the top 10 on the final evening, there's this extravaganza that they have, and you get called up on stage, and the whole time we were there last year, we just kept saying that we wanted to make it on stage, so hopefully, this year, we'll be making it on stage and reporting back that we finished in the top 10 in the country. Anyone else have any questions?
You might want to share the upcoming, they too are fundraising for their event. And in case anyone in the viewing audience, or at the school committee, or here with us tonight notices the ties on these gentlemen, this is part of their fundraising. I own quite a few of those ties for my family members and people I know, and so, want to share your upcoming fundraiser? Very exciting.
Brandon spoke early, we've been trying to fundraise, you know, from day one. We already have our plans for next year as well. Everything costs money. The State Leadership Conference costs $50 a person, and through our fundraising, we were able to pay for all expenses with all of our students that we went, and we actually had 14 students go. So, we sold 480 lollipops, we donated 36 pounds of candy, by the way. We also donated $200 to Marcha Dimes this year, just simply by having a jug with a little hole in it, and people donating money during lunch, before school, and after school. I tell you, these guys are fantastic when it comes, they got the business sense going. They're all going to be successful, I know that. But on May 30th, we are going to be having a car wash at Cunningham Elementary School, and it is going to be Name Your Price. So, you're going to be able to show up, and you're going to decide how much you want to donate to help support us. So, if you're a student, you want to give $5, if you're an adult, you want to give 10, 20, 40. It's Name Your Price, so we're not going to turn anyone away from it, but it's going to be May 30th from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at Cunningham Elementary. And we also, we're still looking into trying to have a can drive that day as well, so you could pull up, drop your cans off, and then have your car washed on that day. We also are going to be, and the students last year at Nationals and at the State Leadership Conference got this idea from other students, talking about how do you guys raise money. We have a company that was gracious enough to donate t-shirts for us, and then SUCR designed a logo for us, so we're going to be putting, it's going to have a logo on the front and a back that they designed, they are very, very cool, and so, we're going to be able to sell those and make 100% profit from them. So, those are the two big fundraisers that we have coming up, the car wash, and then students be looking out for the t-shirts I'm going to be, I'll be picking up next week, and then they'll go for sale immediately following that. And also, we want to thank you again for your support with helping us as well, you know, funding the trip.
And in closing, we also, I was just whispering to a sys- And in closing, we also, I was just whispering to Assistant Superintendent Shan, telling her the resumes of each of these, uh, young men and their, the school committee would recognize some of their parents at public meetings lobbying for Latin, there's a Latin scholar standing there and, uh, one individual here who taught himself the additional AP courses and took the classes on his own. So I could be, uh, junior book award winners, Ms. Erickson and Harry, we could be, um, uh, part of your families, we're very, very proud of you, um, and we've followed you since the elementary schools, each one of you, and we wish you the best of luck and you make us very proud. All of Milton High School you make proud and the Milton Public Schools.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you AJ, thank you.
Our next chairman, Zulus, I'd like to invite up, uh, our athletic director, Larry Rooney and Milton Public School parent, uh, MFE member, Ms. Heller. And Ms. Heller, you'll do the introductions.
Our coach. Our erstwhile citizen speak.
Hi, I'm Eileen Heller and actually this is John Zeitz, our swim coach.
Make sure that works.
Hello?
There you go, you got it.
Uh, I'm, I'm John Zeitz, I am the, uh, swim coach of the year, um, uh, also the eighth grade, uh, math teacher at Pierce Middle School.
Good evening, uh, school committee members, Superintendent Gormly and Central Office and those on the panel this evening. Uh, my name is Larry Rooney, I'm the athletic director here at Milton High School and, um, we're here this evening to talk about our swim club for the past three years, um, and talk about where we hope to take our swim club, uh, in the future here at Milton High School within the Bay State Conference and, um, within the MIAA, the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association. Our swim club has been around for three years under the guidance of Eileen Heller. She's done a fantastic job with putting this program together three years ago, prior to my days here at Milton High School. In this past year, we were able to obtain, uh, Coach Zeitz from the middle school, who has done a fantastic job as a swim coach, uh, for these kids. We have great support here from, uh, our current swim program and, and some parents as well. Couple of things I want to talk about, um, which would support this program, uh, becoming a varsity program here at Milton High School. Currently, there are 12 schools in the Bay State Conference. The 11 other schools all have at least a boys or a girls swim program. Girls swim program is in the fall in the Bay State Conference, boys is in the winter. Our swim program has been a co-ed program in the wintertime. By becoming a co-ed program in the wintertime, we become the seventh Bay State Conference school for winter swim. By doing that, the MIAA, our governing body, recognizes the Bay State Conference, um, as a league which allows individuals and the team to compete in postseason play. So as it exists right now, the Bay State Conference, other six swim team, teams, programs do not get recognized by the MIAA. This would, uh, legit, make our swim program more legitimate, uh, here at Milton High School, but just as important, it would, um, make our Bay State Conference league, uh, very important with the MIAA and more in line with all the other sports that we offer here at Milton High School and, uh, within the Bay State Conference. Um, a couple other, in, in, and in saying that, this past year, we had three very strong swimmers that would have qualified for postseason play, um, but because we were a swim club, uh, they, they were not able to do so. Um, of the 27 swimmers this past year, about 23 of them are 85% would not play another winter sport, um, so these kids are getting involved at Milton High School in a way that they may not, um, would have during this, uh, winter season, which is great for our kids. They're getting involved with the school outside of the classroom, uh, they're becoming members of the community. Uh, of the 27, between 50 and 60% at least play a second sport. Some competing in crew in the fall or spring, um, but we have multi-sport athletes, uh, within the swim club, uh, which is very important. Again, they're giving back to the school, they're giving back to the, uh, um, to our athletic, uh, program, which is very important. Um, we have a great relationship with the Egan Center, right here in Milton, down on Uncity Road in the, in the Shamrock Swim Club. Um, the manager of that center, our owner of that center, Chris Payson, uh, is very impressed with, uh, how Eileen Heller and Coach, um, uh, Zeitz has put this program together over the last three years and he's looking forward to having us back and is already, already talking about ways that we can build this program, um, that started with 14 three years ago, 22 last year, now at 27, we anticipate those numbers to be up in the 30 range moving forward. Um, so the numbers of those, uh, young swimmers, uh, are growing here at Milton High School and that's great for the sport. Um, I think as we all know, uh, these kids do a great job in the classroom, uh, when they're out there competing on an athletic team in a sport like swim, uh, they become well-rounded student athletes and all of these kids, um, um, have done that here for Milton High School. They're proud to be swimming for us, um, and, um, we look for your support, uh, moving forward. I'll hand it over to Eileen Heller and maybe have her share her experience over the last three years.
I just want to say thank you for hosting us tonight. I couldn't be more proud of these, uh, children that I've worked with over the last three years. Um, they are absolutely wonderful, I've met wonderful families, I'd actually love for them to all come up so they can, come on up guys. And, um, I think we're going to have our two captains just say a couple of brief words about the program, um, because it really, it has grown tremendously, uh, back from when we first started in 2012 and we were carpooling down to the Waymouth Club and to take Larry's point, we really have a wonderful, wonderful relationship with the Egan Center now. And, um, I'll let our swim captains, uh, introduce themselves and, and chat a little bit more about, uh, our, the past three seasons.
Um, I'm Emma Heller and I'm a junior at Milton High.
I'm Rachel Joyce and I'm also a junior at Milton High.
Um, so when we first started off, we were going to the Waymouth Club and it was a small team and we all took like a small shuttle bus and now it's really grown and we've, um, been able to compete at meets, even winning some of our meets and, um, it's really grown great like friendships and I think it would reflect really well in Milton, um, if we were able to compete in the Bay State because some of our times are qualifying and, um, we've had like a wonderful season.
It's like really great for all the kids to, um, get involved and even if they're doing a sport, they get to stay involved in a sport for winter and it's a lot of fun to get to meet new people. Thank you.
This is my first year at, at coaching, um, actually at high school. Um, I have close to 20 years' experience coaching national team, USS teams. Uh, took a few years off, I came back into coaching to coach this team and I got to tell you, it was, it was a wonderful experience for me, um, the camaraderie and the, the teammanship, as you can see here, it, it's amazing, um, but this team is really, um, exciting me to be a coach again, I'm excited to coach again next year. Um, I, I hope that this all moves forward and we, um, we can, um, it's work, it's great. Thank you.
And one final point of why it's so important to gain our varsity status, right now, I'm personally calling coaches and asking if they'll swim against us and I have to say, we have an awesome community on the South Shore, they've been very, you know, willing to compete with us, um, but with, with becoming varsity, we'll just be populated automatically into the system and it'll make it a lot more easy for everyone, uh, involved. So we really appreciate your, uh, having us tonight and, and thank the entire community for all of their support.
I think, um, one of the most important things that you need to know moving forward with this swim club becoming a varsity sport is, it will be self-sustaining moving forward. We will not, or they will not be asking for finances to be supported, uh, by the athletic budget. Um, they've done a great job with their finances over the last three years and, um, it's projected to be the same. So, uh, the sport will be self-sustaining at the varsity level, uh, moving forward.
Thank you Larry, thank you everyone. Um, before we, uh, have our discussion and our vote, um, do any of the members have questions for anyone here? Leroy, do you want to?
Well, I, I had the opportunity to talk to, uh, Mr. Rooney and Ms. Heller. We first discussed this at finance subcommittee and, and I'm very clear now on what, what the objective is, but I'd like to take a moment to, um, to thank Ms. Heller, Coach Zeitz, uh, Mr. Rooney for, um, the work they've done thus far. This is a real family affair for the Hellers and she can see her daughter's on the team, uh, her mother is in the audience and her husband's in the back there. Um, but I, I think this is, we need to recognize that the treasure that we have in Milton, you're involved in MFE, you're doing this on your own and, and we're, we're fortunate to have parents like you, so thank you. And I'll wait for the discussion, Mr. Chair, but I do have a motion.
Okay. Becky?
Um, I'd just like to second all you do, um, Eileen, but just to give some background, where she really did start this at her, you know, had a meeting at her house, which, you know, I attended even though my oldest was, is like eight at the time. And I think that's because, you know, swimming is one of these things, a lot of, um, kids right now do club swimming and, um, which is great, it's fantastic, it's not, they get to swim and these clubs are very competitive, but it's, it's a different thing to be able to participate and, um, through your school. It's, you know, really an honor where you can show your talent, you've been swimming in these other, um, clubs and then you get to show your, you know, your friends what you can do. Um, and it's the kind of sport that's just really so all-inclusive of, you might be the best swimmer and you might be able to qualify for the state level, which I think this is important to move us to that varsity status, so you guys can do that, it's something to, a goal that you should be able to achieve. Um, but you might be just a swimmer that does it for fun and to meet new people and that's what's great about the team. There, I don't know if you touched on this, I might have missed it, but I don't think that there are any cuts to the team. It's, you know, anybody that goes out gets to participate and, you know, you can choose your event. Um, and it's also one of the only sports that really is teaching you how to survive better, right? It's an important survival skill to be able to swim, especially if you're doing crew, which I think I heard that a lot of you are. So, um, there's been a lot of, uh, articles in the paper lately about how everyone should learn to be, not just a, not be able to swim, but a strong swimmer. Um, there are even colleges, I think MIT still has that in the books, you can't graduate unless you know how to swim. So, um, I think you've done the work, you've showed that this, um, the numbers have gone from, you know, a smaller amount to more and more every year and you've been self-sustaining this whole time and you continue to do that and now we have, um, a local facility which it makes it easier for kids to get there. We have a, a coach that's within our realm that's, yeah, with a great experience, so I'd love to see this move forward. I think you've done the work, you know, we've showed that it's a, um, a great sport, the kids are interested and it's really important to me that we move to the varsity level so that some of our kids can showcase their talents to that next level, so I want to thank you.
Uh, Dr. Donahue.
So, um, uh, Mr. Rooney, I, I presume that, um, there's a, a benefit, uh, in terms of college or university recruiting, when they come to watch a varsity level sport as opposed to a club level sport and transition from a, a club to a varsity, uh, would, would assist with that, or any of our excellent swimmers, uh, who are looking to take their, their competition to the collegiate level? Is that accurate or would you like to expand on that at all?
In general, with sports, um, these kids will definitely get more recognized if they are swimming for their high school as a varsity level sport, absolutely. I know that firsthand as a former coach and as athletic director, um, absolutely, they'll get recognition, uh, from colleges. I'll pass it off to Coach Zeitz specifically how-
He's recruited, he's had four scholarships.
How it relates specifically in, in swim.
Well, besides recognition, this is working, yeah, uh, besides the recognition, um, to be able to be given the chance to actually compete at a higher level, that being state level, that being state championships, um, that obviously has opened the door to a lot of different avenues. Um, i- if we stay a club, we will not have the opportunities to compete at that higher level. Um, recruits will not look at, pretty much, they only look at specific, uh, specific meets, um, that being state meets, that being nationals, senior nationals, junior nationals, there's certain meets they actually go to, to, you know, hunt and find those people. Um, to be able to compete at a higher level will give those athletes that opportunity, you know, for that, that next, uh, the next level, if they, if they want to go ahead and do that.
Great, thank you.
Sheila?
Yeah. Um, so Larry, I was wondering, um, if you and, and or Eileen, um, can explain, I, at the beginning of the presentation, you had said that, um, the girls swim is a fall sport and then the, and then in, for boys, it's a winter sport and then you said though it would be a co-ed winter. So can, is there, uh, can you explain that, are there certain co-ed teams and then there, or there's just fall female or explain that?
Within the Bay State Conference, um, girls swim is offered in the fall.
Uh huh.
Then the Bay State Conference, boys swim is offered in the winter. If you do not have a fall girls team and not enough boys for the winter, you could have a co-ed team during the winter. If you do not have enough girls in, uh, during the fall, um, you can have the co-ed team in the, in the fall, um, but you could not have co-ed in both.
So the, so the girls will, like, if they're on a relay team or even do the butterfly, like, they go against boys and it is what it is?
Yes, correct.
Good, okay, good. All right, like to hear it, like to hear it, yes.
So the league itself and the MIAA recognizes that even though, uh, girls swim and boys swim are in two different seasons, a school can have a co-ed swim team in one of those two.
Kristin?
Um, and it, just like everybody else said, it's a, it's a great thing that you're all doing this, um, I do have to ask a couple of questions that feel like I'm going to be the bad guy here. Um, $400, it's just like the hockey fee of $500, parents understand it's more than the regular fee, um, and it's going to stay a higher fee and people understand that, right? What else can you say except yes?
Yes, correct.
Um, but what if that fee, you know, certain folks can't afford that fee, how do the kids get on the team? I just, I have a couple of questions, if, if it's okay, can you just answer as we go?
Please, please. So, um-
It's very important.
The user fee for swim this past year was $400 and it, and it was that because, um, the rental of the Egan Center, similar to hockey in Yule and Rink, it's a little bit more expensive than other sports, um, for the rental fee. Unlike hockey, really outside of their swimsuits and very little equipment, there's not much more, uh, many more expenses that these kids or families will incur.
Mm-hmm.
For those families that, uh, cannot afford that, whether they qualify, uh, for the free reduced lunch program or, uh, need a reduced fee, we will not turn anybody away.
Okay.
And we've allowed, and, and that's the same across the board with all sports, uh, but that is correct here as well.
Kristin, on that point, I think Mr. Walker has a, a question on that point and then we'll get back to-
So I, I was going to save this to our discussion because I actually have a motion. The, I, I think the, the critical point here is that I'm going to move that we make this a self-sustaining sport with the flexibility to set the fees at the level that covers their cost. My view is, we can't have this both ways. If we say it's a self-sustaining sport with no contribution from the general fund, then we can't constrain them by saying, but you can only set your fee at this level. It's one, one or the other. If it's our sport, then it should fit into our fee schedule. If it's self-sustaining, then they, they're, they're only setting the fees at a level that covers the cost, which I think is actually $450, but this, this proposal here, which really isn't a proposal, was from earlier in the discussion. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Can I just-
Please, Kristin, yeah?
Okay, so that is also part of my concern and $450, you know, is a fairly high fee, but with the hockey team, it's 500 and it's not self-sustaining, so it is part of our-
Hockey, it's 600.
Oh, it's 600, excuse me, oh my. Um, so it's 600 and it is part of our operating budget or the athletic thing. Anyway, so that's a concern for me, 450, it's self-sustaining, that's a lot of money for parents to come up with, so that's just, I'll just put that out there.
We have meet, is this, is this on, sorry? So we have meetings and, um, and I've made it very clear on all of my emails, they, they received numerous emails from me, we will not turn anyone away, they can contact me, I put my cellphone privately and people have and I have gone out of my way to, to make those accommodations when they need be. So I can assure you that, um, we really work with people and then the, the kids are wonderful, they do fundraising on their own, um, so we do have a decent, um, amount set aside as well and, and I, I think they may have emailed you the financials, so I don't know if that makes you feel a little bit better.
No, and, and I'm very glad that we're doing this and I don't mean to monopolize all this time, but I do have some questions about it because right now, we all are in this room and we agree and- this room, and we agree, in five years, we're not all going to be in this room, or at least I'm not going to be in this room. So, you know, having it be very clear when people come and say, "Well, why is the swim team paying 450?" What if you're not sustaining? I understand that you are, having done a fair amount of fundraising myself, some years it's really great, and other years it's not. So, thinking about that in terms of sustainability, because I do want the swim team to be there, it's in some ways, like Mr. Walker said, it's really not fair for you not to be part of our budget. If I can just finish this, and then I'll stop. And then the other concern I had, so what if you don't raise the money? And then the other concern is, is the contract with the Egan Pool, what's our safety net around the costs of that? Um, the viability of the Egan Pool, I don't know much about it. Um, so that would be another concern with me, that if we start this, which it sounds like we probably will, I just want to make sure that we've got the fees, the sustainability in the pool contract, or fees around the pool, sort of set.
Those are excellent questions, and when we started this three years ago, one of the reasons the original athletic director was against it was for exactly the reason. So, your, your questions are, are very, very valid. Um, but I felt that old saying, if we don't build it, you know, you have to try. So, build it, and they will come, and they have come, so I, I expect them to continue coming. And I think that with children, you've got to give them a chance, they've got, you've got to give them, allow them to be involved in other opportunities, and if we always worry about, "Well, what about the sustainability?" Unless we work on it now, that's the only way we, we can continue. And I think, um, we have a very strong, and, and for myself even, um, I'm the assistant coach, I never believed if you asked me that three years ago that I would do that, I just wanted to be a mom that started this, and I would love, I hope I, I do this for the next 10 years. I absolutely love the kids, and they have taught me so much as well. Um, so I really hope that we will think about what you're saying, and we have, we, each year, we put a certain amount away, because we do want to provide a, you know, kind of have a little baby endowment as we, as we go along, um, because we, I understand and expect that. There is, Milton does so many wonderful things that we can't expect to be funded. So, we want this to remain self-sustaining, um, so, you know, that is, is how we would like to keep it. And I guess that's, I don't know if Larry wants to answer, but that's probably the best way to answer it. I really feel a huge commitment, um, from the, from the, the people here, and we'll just keep that in mind, and each year, keep trying to build on that capital that we've raised so far.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just add, uh, we do have a very good relationship with the Egan Center and Shamrock Swim Center. It hasn't crossed my mind, if they close down, what happens to our swim program. I don't see that happening, um, but it is an outside group, and, uh, we're, we're renting their facility. I guess it would be the same concern, uh, what's happening with Yulin Rink and our hockey programs. I think we're a big player down there at the Egan Center. I think our hockey program in the town of Milton is, is a big program down at Yulin. Um, and if we maintain that relationship that we do have, uh, and look to build upon it, we, I've already talked about, um, with Dr. Spaulding at the middle school, if, if there needed to be an intermarrow or part of their past program, one or two days a week, to send some of the middle school swimmers down there, to maintain that relationship, um, that it would just build on it moving forward.
Great.
So...
Good. Thank you.
Ms. Gormley.
So, I want to, again, recognize, Ms. Heller and Mr. Rooney, this has been a long time coming. We have other sports for the viewing public to know that have gone through this process, and, uh, this is an opportunity. And if we close our eyes, just like the last two groups of Milton High School students, we'll be seeing these swimmers here, and, uh, Mr. Zeit, they'll be going to competitions at the state and national level. We couldn't be, uh, more pleased about swim. And our philosophy, I can speak for the high school principal, um, all options for Milton High School students. If Milton High School students, um, are going to excel, we want to offer them every single opportunity this town possibly can. And, uh, Ms. Heller, uh, you and the parents in the audience have met the school system more than halfway, and, uh, on behalf of the school system and Milton High School, we appreciate it, and we are so proud and thrilled about the swim.
All right, if there, if there are no other questions for our guests, you're welcome to stay. Oh, Mr. Walker.
Um, this is in closing, actually.
Yep, sure.
Uh, I, I'd just like to underscore something that the superintendent said earlier about how multi-talented our students are. Um, when I alluded to the conversation I had with Ms. Heller and Mr. Rooney, uh, it was actually at the Student of the Month Celebration at the high school, uh, two weeks ago, Emma was receiving an award, and for the people at home, three of our Life Smarts, uh, team is actually also on the swim team, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, we'll now move to a motion, and then discussion and vote. Our guests are welcome to stay where they are, which may be a successful advocacy tool.
Exactly.
Uh, staring us down. Uh, but, uh, you can either stay here, or you can go back, it, uh, it doesn't, doesn't matter what, to us, I guess, and so I will entertain a motion.
We have to see the vote, so we can just park the camera.
Oh, okay, so, oh, yes. If you want to stay there, you'll have to, uh...
There you go. Seeing democracy in action.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to our technical director. Um... Mr. Peeler, all set? All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Walker.
I move that we designate swimming as a self-sustaining varsity sport with the flexibility to set fees at a level sufficient to cover their costs.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Does the administration have a recommendation?
I recommend, I support Mr. Walker's recommendation.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right, good luck to you all, and you're welcome to stay, uh, beyond to our next discussion of the state budget, if you want.
All of us. All of us.
Thank you all for your support.
Congratulations.
Continuing with the superintendent's report.
I'd like to ask Dr. Pavlicek, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, to provide an update, um, on the status of the FY16 budget at the state level. Dr. Pavlicek?
Everybody's so excited to hear about it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If the audience could just celebrate a little more quietly, so...
I can, I can make this very brief. Um, the, uh, as you've seen, the House Ways and Means has proposed their budget, uh, similar to the governor's budget proposal, with a little more money for Chapter 70, but more importantly, it reinstates the money for the full-day kindergarten transition grants that we have. Currently, the budget is in the Senate Ways and Means. Um, they're only in informal sessions this week, um, it'll be a little while before it comes out of Senate Ways and Means. So, there's nothing really new to report at this point on, on where the state budget is.
Thank you, Dr. Pavlicek.
And just closing in happenings, I'd like to begin the happenings with Chairman Zulis giving a summary of this morning's walk-to-school event. Walk or ride-to-school event, national program.
From, yes, it was the Massachusetts Walk and Ride to School Day today, and, uh, I was, I was able to see two of the schools, and we had, uh, it was quite a, quite a showing at Cunningham and Collycutt, um, uh, and I understand there were similar showings at Glover and Tucker and Pierce, so I think it was a very successful day. We had a lot of, a lot of students, and parents, and guardians, um, and dogs, uh, walking, and getting a lot of fresh air, and, uh, hopefully having a little less, uh, carbon monoxide, and a little less gas fumes as they walked to school, as opposed to having so many cars drive to school. So, as far as I know, uh, it, it was, it was a good, uh, it was a good, uh, good effort.
Well, we have, um, very briefly, Eric Askay, Glover and PS Parent has always championed, um, and is integral in the project in Milton, putting the bus, the bike routes and construction around the Glover School, but you have to give Mr. Zulis credit. Mr. Zulis is heading up the Transportation Subcommittee, and, uh, he took on this ride or walk-to-school event and gave it new life. I haven't seen that much enthusiasm in six schools, and, um, we went into, I told Mr. Zulis, a kindergarten, uh, kindergarten class, and the teacher yelled out, "We had 100% of the children walk to school today." And so, if several of those, the majority of those children continue to walk or ride their bikes, um, this will be a culture change, um, in Milton, and the enthusiasm was high. So, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. McCarthy?
So, I have a, um, message from the Milton High School Boosters. The Milton High, uh, the Milton High Boosters organization is, uh, busy preparing for the Varsity Letter Banquet, which will be held on Wednesday, June 3rd, in the Copeland Fieldhouse. This banquet celebrates the accomplishments of our, of our Milton varsity athletes by recognizing them with a formal sit-down dinner, providing varsity letters and pins to students, managers, and videographers, part of a varsity team, and awarding 17 scholarships to senior athletes. The Boosters organization sponsors this banquet, invites approximately 400 athletes and their families. We typically host between 800 and 900 people. The event starts at 6:00 PM with doors opening at 5:30 PM. Members of the community are welcome to come to the banquet. Tickets cost $20 for family members and friends, varsity athletes are free, and tickets can be purchased on the Milton Boosters website, miltonboosters.com.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. And in closing, um, the C, our CPAC has asked me, uh, to remind the viewing public and for the school committee to circle on their calendars, Monday, May 11th, from 7 to 9 o'clock in the PS Middle School Library. In past years, our advocacy group for, uh, parents of children with special education, all parents in the Milton Public Schools, um, are involved, whether the children are involved in our special ed program or not. And in past years, the CPAC would have one night on preschool, another night on elementary, another night on high school programming. So, the CPAC is working collaboratively with the Milton Public Schools and sponsoring this night, and I'm proud to tell you that, along with our, uh, pupil personnel director, we have, uh, between 15 and 20 staff members presenting. So, there'll be a preschool kindergarten present table, there'll be a, uh, middle-high school table, and there'll be an elementary table, there'll be presentations, and then completely open to questions and answers from parents. So, the response from the Milton Public School staff, as I said to the chairperson of the CPAC, really demonstrated the partnership with the CPAC. Their response was phenomenal. So, that's Monday, May 11th, from 7 to 9, at the PS Middle School Library.
Ms. Gormley, may I follow up on that?
Absolutely.
Um, thank you for that. Um, I just wanted to go off on that, and, um, Best Buddies, we are working together with the CPAC to create a childcare. Somewhere within the school, we're still, um, working out the final details with CPAC, but we would like to offer childcare for any parents that are attending the event, that may have difficulty finding a babysitter, or having, um, their children come. Best Buddies is, as many of you know, an organization in Milton and internationally that works with children with special needs. So, we'll be having many of our club members, and I believe our club advisor, coming to help out with any childcare. We'll be doing a variety of things that will work for, uh, kids from all ages, from elementary school to, uh, high school. So, any parents that were worried about that, just know that, that will be offered that night.
So, for the viewing public or parents new to this, Mr. McCarthy, parents or guardians, bring their children, and there'll be, um, Milton High School staff member there overseeing the high school students, who will either be in the calf or the audit, uh, the gymnasium, and there'll be organized, um, activities. Is there a charge, or is that community service?
This will all be community service-based.
Yet to be commended. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Superintendent Gormley. Next item on the agenda is, uh, Chairman's report. Let me go off agenda just for a minute, and note that it is Teacher Appreciation Week. Uh, the teachers form the backbone, I think, of our system, and, um, throughout our six schools, uh, our teach, their teachers bring their talents, they bring their energy, they're, they bring their enthusiasm every day. Uh, they deserve our commendation, they deserve our appreciation, and so, uh, if we see a teacher this week, um, please wish them, uh, wish them well, and tell them that you appreciate them. So, just want to note that it is Teacher Appreciation Week for, for everyone out there. Um, next on the agenda, uh, school choice, uh, and this will be our discussion and vote. Um, and so, I will open the discussion, unless, without objection, if everyone is prepared, I will, I will open with a motion, um, to not accept school choice for the Milton Public School District for the FY16 school year. Um, second to my Mr. Walker, and discussion. Anything from the administration, any recommendations from the administration on whether or not to, um, accept school choice for the Milton Public School District?
My recommendation is to not accept to enroll in school choice.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, I just have a question, uh, is, this is, this is to not, not allow students into the, um, into Milton Public Schools by school choice, but can I ask a question, just because I'm new, if they, in the past, when they come, or do they pay to, to be here, or not?
Uh, oh, go ahead.
We've never been involved in school choice in the Milton Public Schools.
Oh, we never have? Oh, okay, though, that's different, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
It's a great question.
Yeah, I didn't know. Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's, you know, it's been around for 24 years, and apparently Milton has never, um, participated. There is a compensation, if the student, if you accept a student, there is compensation for that.
Right.
But, um, but the Milton Public Schools have never participated in that.
Okay, just want to know.
But, can I add to that?
Yeah, please.
We might get a compensation for a child that comes in that does not meet the cost, but also, if a student leaves us and goes somewhere else, we lose money for them.
Right, right, right.
So, it's difficult.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but just to clarify, um, if we withdraw with respect to being a receiving district, that doesn't mean we are not ascending district. Parents and guardians have the choice...
That's true.
...in Milton to go to another district. I don't think it happens that often. I think we are a very competitive product and services that we offer here, so I don't think it happens that often, but they do have that choice. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is, um, school committees, subcommittees. I thought we were in a position to, um, nominate most of our committees, um, tonight. However, uh, we apparently are still in flux with some of the committees, and some of the, some of the choices of the, of the members. So, uh, what I'd like to do is, um, give the members, um, another two weeks, and, um, and make the nominations at our next meeting, and secure all the committees at our next meetings. We could do a couple, but I, but given the, the, they're really small ones, so I, so in order to give ourselves flexibility, I think it's best to make the nominations and vote on the committees, um, on May 20th. Without objection? That's what we'll do. Um, so, um, make sure you form your thoughts, and have discussions, and have discussions without a quorum, and, uh, and so we're ready to go on May 20th. Um, let's see, where's my agenda? Town meeting update we have, we have struck, and so we now have the third quarter report, I believe, Dr. Pavlicek?
You have in your pack the third quarter report that was, uh, distributed through Finance Subcommittee at the beginning of April. Um, it's, uh, tracking our expenditures for the year. Uh, the cover memo indicates that as of April 1st, and, uh, just parenthetically, it hasn't changed. Since then, we are, uh, on track with our budget, uh, projecting out our, uh, costs for our staffing. We are in a good position to finish the year on target. Um, but, you know, certain lines are, as we mentioned, have been a little over during the year, some of the technology costs and so forth, but in the large, we are in good shape to finish the year out, um, in a, in a positive position. So, right now, we are, we're at the position now with two months left, we're starting to watch the expenditures, most of the, um, supply-related expenditures are done, I mean, except for, you know, emergency purchases of paper or something like that, we're not buying books or anything like this at this time. And we're in the process of really cleaning up purchase orders, making sure that everything that was ordered has come in, bills are paid, and, uh, tracking down, uh, any expenditures that are outstanding, so we minimize the amount of work we have to do in the last week or two of the fiscal year as we're closing the year out. Um, but, uh, at this point, we're, we don't anticipate issues of closing out the year.
Dr. Pavlicek, we're, we're going to be asked to, to approve the third quarter report Dr. Pavlicek, we're going to be asked to approve the third quarter report by vote?
That has been the practice.
Okay. And so for our, particularly for the new members, could you just briefly describe what the approval of the third quarter report means? If you don't mind, just very briefly.
It's really more accepting the report.
Accepting the report, yep.
It's, because obviously, I don't think anyone has gone through and audited me on it, so I don't think you're signing away that all these numbers are, you know, that you've double-checked all my addition and so forth. But just in general terms, for new folks, the first several pages of the report, the ones with colored stripes on them, are an attempt to look at our budget in the large. We work with a general fund budget, but we also have many other sources of funding, revolving funds, fees and the like, grants. And so this is an attempt to look at the budget as really a forty-six million dollar enterprise instead of a forty-ish million dollar enterprise, that's the general fund. Behind that is the budget just from the general fund, which tracks the spending there, which is, while it's helpful from a general fund perspective, the all-funds perspective is a better way to see where we really are, because it merges in all the various revolving funds and so forth. Behind that is the, our statement of revolving funds, our statement of grants, and our statement of the food service budget. So you can see where we are in the various different sectors of our budget. So this is, you know, as I say, this is an information item for the committee, just so we can track how we are progressing through the year.
Any questions for Dr. Pavlicek on the third quarter report?
I got something somewhere in here.
Superintendent Gordon Lee?
For the new members to know, and the viewing public, that this is one of our agenda items at our Finance Subcommittee meeting. And so the Finance Subcommittee members go over this report. They ask outstanding questions, looking at some of the pages. They've asked for additional information, and that's how the format has changed. And they know these numbers, they monitor these numbers. And for all members, whether you sit on the Finance Subcommittee or not, no questions too small. When you get these reports, it's good for all of us, for you to ask questions, and for us to explain it to you, for you to own the Milton Public School budget. So it's a very valuable document.
And effectively, until May twentieth, this committee is acting as the Finance Committee because we don't have a Subcommittee at this point. Any other questions for Dr. Pavlicek?
I already asked one.
Then I will move to accept the third quarter report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five zero one. Next item on the agenda is approval of vendor warrants. Do we have any vendor warrants, Dr. Pavlicek?
We do. There have been two vendor warrants that you have signed, and we have submitted for payment since the last school committee meeting. So we need to take a pro forma vote to approve them, you know, for the record. I'll do them one at a time. Vendor warrant number forty-four, which was dated April thirtieth, was in the amount of four hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
And again, for the benefit of the new members, could you just briefly describe what we're doing when we approve these vendor warrants in this form as opposed to signing the warrant?
When you sign the warrant, you're approving payment of the various items contained in it. This is a formal motion for the record that we have done so.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I apologize for that. All right, so we have vendor number forty-four dated April thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of four seventy-one, five sixty-four, sixty-eight. I will move to approve that vendor warrant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Two, three, four. All opposed? And abstentions? Five zero one.
And we also have vendor warrant number forty-five, dated May seventh, two thousand and fourteen, that was signed on Monday, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
All right. So I will move for approval of vendor warrant number forty-five dated May seventh, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? And abstentions? Five zero one.
Just will note for the committee that as we get towards the end of the year, we've been doing vendor warrants pretty much bi-weekly, but as we're filling out the end of the year here and trying to close things out, you may see them slightly more frequently than that. For instance, we will have one next week as well. So I will be getting in touch with you for signatures on a warrant at the beginning of next week. If we're still in town meeting on Monday night, I'll see you all there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Mr. Walker.
I would just add to Dr. Pavlicek's description. When we sign the warrant, it is certainly correct that we're confirming or actually approving the payments to the vendors shown and the amounts shown, but based on the opinion we got from legal counsel, we're also affirming that there's sufficient amount in the line item where that particular charge was budgeted to cover the payment.
And I believe to that point, we have a cover sheet now that indicates that, particularly for the new members, there's a cover sheet that indicates whether those line items, whether we have sufficient funds in those line items. So keep your eyes on the cover sheet.
Do we have a warrant?
No, he signed it Monday.
They might be trying to trick, Mr. Pavlicek does like to trick us sometimes to see if we're looking, so.
That's right.
Mr. Life Smarts Champion over there. I wouldn't have passed him.
That's right. All right, so now the agenda item that we've all been waiting for, the minutes. So first, the minutes of November twenty-fourth, two thousand and four, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen. Now, there is an issue with these minutes. These are minutes of a Finance Subcommittee meeting that was attended by a then-school committee member, and so there was a quorum there, so we had minutes of a school committee meeting.
Move approval.
That's great. And I do want to, and I'll second that, but I do want to just point out that sometimes when people don't attend meetings, they will abstain. I often abstain when I haven't attended a meeting. If we have four abstentions here, then the minutes won't be approved. So I will advocate, and I think Mr. Walker will join me, in advocating that you vote to approve these minutes because they do accurately reflect what happened at that meeting. Mr. Walker?
Well, I think it's, if you have abstentions, it's the number of people voting.
It's actually the number of people.
We could have four abstentions, and since I plan to vote in favor.
I think under, and I think it's policy B E D D, I think it's a majority of the members present. So if we don't have a majority of the members present, then we don't have approval of a vote. And it's, so it's a majority of the members present. So if we have four abstentions, then we'll have two in support, and we'll have four. And we can check the policy if it's an issue.
Mr. Pavlicek might be doing that right now.
But it may not be an issue if we have people to vote.
I'd submit that since we have a policy that says we're covered by Robert's rules, I think Robert's rules supersedes a policy which might be in conflict, but that may be too technical a point for this discussion at this point in the evening.
Yes, it probably is, probably is. So I will advocate among the members to try to get more than two votes for this because I think we need it under our policy. All those in favor, any other discussion of the November twenty-fifth minutes?
Go ahead, I have a question.
You go first.
So we don't typically get minutes of Finance Subcommittee meetings or other Subcommittee meetings. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Could we put that on the agenda for our summer retreat to talk about how we're going to handle this?
Handle?
Do Subcommittee meetings have minutes? Do we bring them here? Is it across the board? Is it only if you feel like it? How does it work?
So this was, this was an unusual circumstance. This was a circumstance in which we actually had four members at a Finance Committee, so it became an actual school committee meeting.
So it's being approved as a school committee meeting?
Correct.
Okay, got it. So I just wanted to tag on to that.
Yep.
To say, can we note that somewhere so we don't forget that we need to figure out minutes from school, from Subcommittee meetings, even if it's not for school committee members?
Right. Typically Subcommittee meetings keep their own minutes and should approve their own minutes and.
Okay. I don't want to discuss.
But we can talk about that, yeah.
Can we please put it on there because there is some confusion about it?
Sure.
So then, is somebody?
I just want to say I'm excited that you're thinking about the summer retreat already.
I want to know when it is. And the other thing is, I just want to be clear, I know you said this, but I was not there, so what I'm voting on is that you all had this, whoever was there, had this meeting, and this is accurate.
Right.
Because you're telling me that.
And Mr. Walker and I are advocating for you to vote for this because we're telling you that this is what.
No, you're advocating.
Well, I'm advocating.
I'm advocating that she should abstain since she wasn't there. Now she can vote for the minutes.
Well, all right, yeah, all right. So all those in favor?
I just, I have, again, because I'm new, if Glenn's looking it up, I would just feel better to know that it's okay to say yes, or that whether we should abstain because we're not there, you know, when both of you have those altering opinions. I mean, if it is okay, then fine, but if not, I just want to know.
I think they're, excuse, I'm sorry, I think they're disagreeing on whether you need the votes. It's not whether you can or not, because I think that nobody would disagree that you, it's generally just a good policy if you're not at a meeting to.
To abstain because you weren't there.
Right. But there's no rule that says you can't vote on it.
Okay.
Right.
If Sheila and I are not in the room, and you have this discussion, where we were present at the beginning portion of this meeting, do we remain part of your members present for the purpose of the vote?
Say again?
If Sheila and I leave.
Okay.
You will have four school committee members at the table during the course of the vote. And that may or may not, I'm wondering if that changes your calculus in terms of.
The policy reads members present. So we can get into a discussion of what members present means. If you're not present, if you just walk out of the room for five minutes, arguably, you're still present. So Kristen?
I think it's a creative idea. I would be afraid it would start bad precedent.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't be comfortable with that. And I'm so in the habit of abstaining when I haven't been at the meeting, but it's making me feel uncomfortable, even though I explicitly trust all of you. It just makes me feel uncomfortable because it's a change in behavior for me.
Yep, absolutely.
So.
This is an unusual circumstance.
Yeah.
Because we have two members who are no longer members of the committee. And so we can table these minutes, and we can, we can table these minutes, and we can take it up next time. If people, if people will consider the issue and may vote in a certain way if they, if they take some time on it. So if, I'm happy to table this until the next meeting so we can get these minutes taken care of. But if people are comfortable voting, I'd like to take the vote.
It seems as though the November twenty-fifth meeting is the only meeting where.
It is. It was an unusual, as I said, it was an unusual circumstance because there were only four members present, and two of those members are no longer on the committee. So why don't we try a vote and see what happens? And, oh, Mr. Walker?
So I was just thinking what Ms. Padera leaned over and said to me, which is, this is the equivalent of the item that town meeting. Well, how long did that discussion of the comma take? So here's my take. It's, if I'm right, then we only, you and I, we're the people there, we need to vote, and we're fine. If I'm wrong, this will be the only minutes of all the minutes of the school committee all year that don't get approved. So I, I'm okay with that. But if you want to proceed, let's go.
Let's proceed. I, let me suggest to the members who weren't present that these minutes accurately reflect what happened, and I would strongly urge a yes vote on this motion. So all those in favor of approving the minutes of November twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen?
No, sorry.
All those opposed? And abstentions? Four zero two, the minutes are approved. All right.
Just this once, I'll do that.
All right, I appreciate, I appreciate that, sure.
Move approval of the March eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen minutes.
Second. Any discussion? Oh, sorry. The two abstentions were Dr. Donahue and Ms. Bagley Jones.
I hate that.
So now on the table are the April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen minutes. Any discussion?
March eighteenth.
Oh, March eighteenth. Oh, I have them in reverse order. March eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen minutes. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Four zero two, with Dr. Donahue and Ms. Varell abstaining.
Move approval of the April first, two thousand and fifteen minutes?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the April first, two thousand and fifteen minutes?
All right.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Four zero two, with Dr. Donahue and Ms. Varell abstaining.
Move approval of the April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen minutes?
Second. Any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
I don't see my name as either present or absent. So if I was absent, I'll abstain. If I was here, my name should be on it, and I don't remember. I was present.
Yeah, you have a second here.
Oh, that's a good way to tell. My name is not at the top.
Those votes are six in.
So can we amend the minutes to?
We will amend, we will only approve them as amended. Any other amendments to the minutes of April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen? Motion is for approval of the minutes as amended. All those in, all those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Four zero two, with Dr. Donahue and Ms. Varell abstaining. Thank you. That actually went more smoothly than I.
May I say something?
Yes, please.
I just want to say, again, for the new members and the viewing public, first, I want to recognize, it's probably not my role, but Ms. Downs on these minutes, and Mr. Zulus this year on the Finance Subcommittee minutes. And this committee puts a lot of time into these minutes. I want to know how many times we go back to these minutes for references, and all the Finance Subcommittee minutes are posted on the web. And so to keep up to date and to take the time to do those minutes, you on a volunteer basis, was huge, and to have this record in place. And Ms. Kelly always felt that people actually read our minutes and read the Finance Subcommittee minutes, and it really brought it to a new level of importance. So to be up to date as we are, and to have this memorialized and everyone agree, is very important.
I think beyond Finance Subcommittee meetings, the minutes, the minutes of this committee are online as well, and perhaps the Policy Subcommittee minutes, I'm not sure if those are there as well. But all right. Next on the agenda, old business, citizen speak topic response. Do we have anything for that? Next meeting agenda, oh, sorry.
Health and Wellness.
Oh, I didn't know that we were going to have a report. Do we have a report?
Yes. Oh, I had texted Glenn to say, but he didn't get my text, to say I'm coming and leave it on the agenda. So we can wait.
No, no, I would, I would.
But Glenn didn't get my text.
No, that's fine. I would move to put the Health and Wellness Subcommittee report back on the agenda. Second, and without objection. Without objection, let's put that report back on the agenda and have the Health and Wellness Subcommittee report from Ms. Bagley Jones.
My apologies for that, and I will be really brief. And really, what I wanted to talk about was the work that the Health and Wellness Committee does, so for the new members and also for the viewing public, you know, to keep the issues alive because they're very important. So the Bullying Committee, it's called the BPAC, Bullying Prevention Act, something like that.
Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, presented. They did a great job, and I'd like to invite them here at some point when it's appropriate in the school year for them to present to us and to the viewing public. And I'm not going to talk about their statistics, but what I wanted to remind people of is the very thorough policies, procedures, and practices that the BPAC has in place and had in place before the state law designated that, and what an incredible job they're doing. It's not just about catching kids bullying, it's about intervening with the bystanders, the targets, and the bullies, with the parents, with the teachers, with the disciplinary actions, and then the reporting out to, does it go to DESI or the, goes to DESI, right, for the state statutes? And they're helping a lot of kids. And it's not a overwhelmingly prevalent, reportable activity. I'm looking at our students over there to see if I'm missing anything on this, but it's an issue that, to the superintendent's credit and. it's an issue that, to the superintendent's credit and the guidance department, they've done an incredible job of being out in front of this issue, but it's alive and well everywhere, and I just want us to keep that in the back or in the front of our minds. Working in conjunction with Larry Rooney, Ms. Gormly's favorite evening of the year is a mandatory, student athletes and parents and their parents are mandated to attend a chemical awareness night, and that is going to happen by hook or by crook because our superintendent is driving us on that, and it's a really important one. We'd also like to find ways, as you guys have heard, about how to get other students who don't play sports involved, but as Ms. Gormly says, we at least have a captive audience with athletes where we can mandate it, track it, just like we do with the concussion. Members of the committee, Carolyn Kinsella and Vicki McCarthy, they participate in our committee, but they have really gone full steam ahead with the Substance Abuse Coalition on the South Shore, and as we all know, they received a huge grant, a huge grant for us, for the town, where they're going to now be able to really work on the substance abuse issues in Milton, just like there are in every other town in this country, to get some work done on the South Shore Coalition on that. There's been a lot of discussion, planning, support, continuation, expanding of the district-wide social-emotional curriculum. And again, the Health and Wellness Committee does not do all of this. We just have discussions and ask other people to follow up on our ideas. Not really, but we're not taking credit for the work that Assistant Superintendent Sheehan is doing. But again, that social-emotional curriculum across all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, is really an important issue for us to be talking about. And Superintendent Gormly, did you talk about Katie Greer?
No, I didn't. Oh, excellent pick-up.
I forget the date, though.
You take it, June for, June, I can't say it. Could you look it up, when Katie Greer is for?
I believe it's right around the Booster's banquet, not on the same night. And Katie Greer, do you want to add a little bit about her?
Last year, parents in the viewing audience might remember, the speaker, Ms. Varell might be able to even speak and enhance this. She's a national speaker on cyberbullying and educating parents and students. This woman can manage 1,000 students in the palm of her hand. She spoke at the middle and high school. The students might be able to speak up. I went to the evening presentation to sit next to the high school principal, who has two teenage daughters, and he's writing down the names of the new sites that she's educating parents about. I don't understand why there aren't standing room only, and why that room isn't packed. So all the PTOs join together, and we seek grants. Katie Greer is coming, Dr. Pavlicek's looking it up. I go to say it's June 1st, but.
That's a Monday, I think that's right.
And the reason there's confusion is that she was canceled because of snow days. So that's why it hasn't happened earlier.
And so to speak to the administration, and I really appreciate you bringing that up, but we have one more meeting before that to clarify the date. She's going to speak this year, this time, to fifth graders and I believe sixth graders. So she would have covered the system. Do you want to speak to her addressing the entire high school staff? You were in the field house.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about it. So last year, she came in and just really talked about, she had a lot of great, like, personal experiences, not negative, but just really being able to, like, convey her message to us, and it was one of, definitely one of the better presentations that we've had throughout high school, just being able to really understand what the effects of it can be. But also, one thing that I will say is, the great, some of the good things about this presentation is, I remember hearing about some stuff, and it was a pretty, like, general consensus that kids in the high school were like, wait, what's that? Like, wait, people don't, like, saying, meaning that people in Milton High School don't do that, and I think that's the, really the community aspect that we have in Milton High School, and I think obviously having these systems in place is very important, but hopefully one day we won't need these systems. Hopefully, one day we won't need these speakers to come in and talk to us because that's just how we are. So that's my kind of thought on that. And then if I could also add one thing. So Milton Student Government, all of us are working together to do MHS Positive Tweets, the P A W, get it?
Did you get it, Dr. Pavlicek?
So we're doing positive tweets throughout the high school, and you can sign up, you can give Mr. Kelly, our advisor, a tweet, and then from the Milton High School Student Government Twitter page, we're going to be tweeting, like, positive things about students, about general life at Milton High School. So that's what we're.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to call on you, Mr. Zulus.
Just to add on to what Matt was saying about the presentation, another aspect of it that really set it apart from some other presentations we have is that it focused a lot on the social media, because now you don't really see bullying so much as, you know, someone pushing a kid into a locker. So I think it was really important to address it as what it's turning into today, so like Matt said, we can really put a stop to it.
So she recognized cyberbullying?
Yes.
Yes. And so can I just?
Please, Kristen, your report.
You know, hearing from you guys about that and that the importance of that, and Matt, your comment about the positive remarks, one of the things we've talked about on and off on the committee with Mr. Mackinaw really pushing us on this is thinking about, okay, so we would say 75% of Milton High School students do not drink, as compared to saying it the other way, like, to rephrase things in a strengths-based kind of way so that kids know, and parents and teachers, that, you know, not every kid drinks, or not every kid does this, or whatever, and we think that's really important. So I love that you're doing those positive tweets, that's a great idea.
That's one thing, we kind of, we got together as a group earlier in the year, and we were talking, because last year, we, the student government worked to bring in, that, we had another speaker that came in and talked about his experience with bullying. And we came together this year, and we were like, those presentations were all so great, but a lot of them are very, like, they're sad, they're, they focus on the negative aspects, which there are a lot of negative aspects, we need to know them, but this year we were like, let's do something positive. Let's really, like, bring out the good community in Milton High School, just like you said, like, share the good statistics, show, share, like, what Milton High School kids do and all the great things we do do. So that's, that was really what drove us this year, was being positive.
That's fabulous.
Great.
And one thing, and then Ms. Padera, or actually, this whole row of people might have something to add. Our meeting's very popular, I must say. I think it's the food that Ms. Morgan brings in in the morning. But we're always, always, always talking about health educators and how important that is, so I'm just always putting that out there in terms of when we look at things and how much we don't, how, I want to phrase it in a positive way, but I can't, we don't have enough health education on the elementary or middle level, but, you know, that's always being worked on. Did I leave anything out, I think you were at the last meeting, but in general? I wasn't at the last meeting. I just, as you said, we are working on, I think, with actually Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, and our head of guidance are working on social-emotional goal for, from the school committee with that, from our directive, and they've been working really hard on it all year, and so we should have an update at some point, but we want to have, like, a good chunk of information to report, so maybe next couple of meetings. And anything else?
No, I think that was an excellent summary. Jackie Morgan is always there to remind us about the value of breakfast and charting the progress with students at every level buying breakfast. And she's really raises the bar and looks for grants to build the kind of cafe that you have at Milton High School and the CAFs at the other schools. So no, I think that's a great summary of the committee's work.
Thank you for saying that about Jackie, because I forgot, and I was just wondering if anybody at this table has actually sat and ate at the breakfast bar, or taken, gotten food from the breakfast bar?
I get from it all the time.
Oh, okay.
Like, at least two or three days a week.
Great.
Because I'll be rushing in in the morning, or like, rushing to student government meeting or one other thing, and so many kids do it, and it's just, it's the most convenient thing. You just run, punch your coat in, and you have breakfast.
Wonderful. We'll make sure to tell Jackie that.
Thank you.
That's it? If anybody has any questions?
I just have a question for Ms. Jones and Becky. So when you say, when you guys are talking about the social and emotional, is that, is that a new focus that you all are looking to research and bring speakers to as opposed to, like, a cyberbullying or drugs and alcohol, or can, I'm just, because I'm new, I just like, if you could speak to that? Because I think that that's a huge issue that's not addressed, especially at the middle school and high school level. And, you know, I just was wondering what was happening with that.
We're, I'll let Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan add to this that she wants, but there was a school committee goal that we have, well, we had several goals, but this was one of them that Spagley, Jones, and I kind of had written together, and it basically involves looking at our curriculum for social-emotional behavior, and so that's what we're doing. We have a lot in place, actually, in the high school, as well as the middle school, with the addition of our health teachers that we added last year. The elementary definitely needs to be looked at, because in the past, we had a curriculum that, what was, we had second step, and then we were looking at Great Body Shop, and then that didn't happen, and then the bullying curriculum came along, and that kind of took everything over. But what we're finding is maybe we need something in addition to that to add at the elementary school, but basically, we're in the, Assistant Superintendent Sheehan kind of was meeting with the leadership team to see what their opinion on, and get their input on curriculums and what we have and what we need to add, and so we're kind of in the mix of that. I don't know if you wanted to add.
So we have formed a committee that represents the elementary schools to look at different curricula for social-emotional learning, and so that we will make a recommendation then to the superintendent as to what we think would be a good curriculum to address those issues. And included in the recommendation would be how we will carve out time during the school day to address the goals for social-emotional learning, and who, you know, will teachers be the, will they be responsible for the instruction, or will it be our adjustment counselors? So we will make, make some recommendations from this committee and hopefully be able to move forward towards, towards meeting the goal. The goal requires us to have a plan in place for the, for addressing social-emotional learning needs by the, by the end of 2015.
Thank you, Kristen.
I think that's it.
Mr. Dr. Pavlicek?
Katie Greer is Monday, June 8th, at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Kristen. Next meeting agenda items, our next regular meeting is on May 20th. We will get our committees nominated and formed on that date, and we'll get out any other information that we have on that meeting well in advance. We have a meeting posted for tomorrow night before town meeting. If everyone can make it, I'd like to meet briefly at 7:00, just to make sure that there are no other budgetary issues that have arisen prior to the, what will hopefully be the last night of town meeting. So if people can arrive at the superintendent's conference room at 7:00, so we can just make sure there's, there's nothing to discuss then. Mr. Walker?
On next meeting agenda items, one was actually captured in the April 1st minutes. I asked that for the position that we created in last year's advancement budget, the parent outreach liaison, that because of the importance of that position to the pre-K literacy initiative that Ms. Padera has been leading, I asked to see the goals for the fiscal '15, '16 year. And the second request was for a report, we set a goal last year of that all of our first graders would have library cards, and I asked for a report in our school as to what percentage of first graders we actually accomplished that for.
So for items for the next agenda, I, what, can we put summer retreat? I'm rolling my eyes, thinking, you know, summer retreat, but I don't see that in our minutes, I mean, in our schedule?
Right. So why don't we put that on the schedule? To schedule.
Right, exactly.
Right, right.
To schedule. Thank you.
And for the new members, it's really less of a retreat than a long meeting to establish our objectives for the year. So we don't go, we really don't go anywhere. We don't, you know, have a spa day or anything like that. It's really, it's really about spending time to develop goals and objectives, and, you know, it may happen, may happen in June, we'll see what we can do in terms of schedule. So anything else? Next meeting agenda items? All right, so next meeting, next regular meeting, May 20th. Next meeting tomorrow night, briefly before town meeting at 7:00. We are adjourned.